Thing to order. Thank you. Good, all right, so. I will go ahead and elevate Justin. For the meeting. And I don't, I don't have anybody else that's an alternate, right? We have a vacant spot. So we'll go ahead and alter and elevate Justin for this meeting and. All right. And we will go ahead and look for an acceptance of the agenda presented and circulated.
I'll move to accept the agenda.
Thank you. Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we'll move forward with the agenda as circulated. Uh, the next item is the reading and approval of the meeting minutes from our August eighth meeting. Does anyone have any errors, omissions, or corrections?
Move to accept.
Okay, who that was, sorry, is that John?
That was Nick.
Nick, thanks, Nick.
I will second.
John with the second, okay, all those in, uh. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain, I wasn't at the meeting.
Thank you, Steve. Motion carries with one abstention, Steve Penner.
Just like to make, point out one thing, it's the regular meeting minutes of August of twenty twenty three, not twenty twenty two.
That's right. The agenda said twenty two and I probably read twenty two. So that is the regular minutes of August eighth, twenty twenty three. All right, um, we will open the public hearing. Application zero three dash two three, Mark Pointon, Fine Home Contracting, representing John Davidson. Address two fifty Scatacoke Road, that's map five, block three, lot two, and they're requesting an increase in nonconformity. So we have a pre-existing. Nonconforming property. And is, do we have someone here representing?
Yes, so John Davidson on the line, so I'm the property owner, and then we also have Joe Gleason on the line from Home Contracting.
Excellent, thank you. All right, um. Just take a quick here, um, Ty did circulate her staff report as well, so. Um, anything you would like to tell us about the property and the project?
Yeah, of course, so um, I I purchased it, it would have been the property in June of last year, so June of twenty twenty. Um, with with the idea behind it of trying to get what's currently two, two kind of dwellings, one of them that doesn't have any plumbing whatsoever in it, connected to make it one livable home, so. Um, currently, if you're looking at the property from the road, the side with the, the side, basically the, the building on the left is the, the building that currently has plumbing in it. Um, the building on the right doesn't have anything, so it's not a very practical living space as far as the winter goes, so um, was actually bought the house with my fiance, we're now married, actually got married a couple of weeks ago. Uh, yeah, thank you for that, so, um, you you know, the idea is just get it connected, uh, we currently reside, um, actually in in Brooklyn, New York, um, with the plan of, I I grew up in a much more rural area, um, and we've been doing this for a while and are looking to kind of. Slow things down a little bit, um, so the plan is to move there full time, once we can, you know, i- if and when we can get the work done, so.
Okay. And, um, have the neighbors all been notified?
Yes, so I sent out the mailing notices, um, and then dropped off the certified mail receipts as well, so.
Thank you, appreciate that. And this was posted as well in the local newspaper, so.
Yes.
So. So your, the addition you're proposing does not. Further the encroachment on any of the.
Yes, that is correct.
The existing properties have multiple nonconformities.
Yeah, so if you, currently, it's every, everything kind of relates to that forty foot step back from the road.
Right.
Look at the two buildings currently, um, the screened-in porch on what would be, again, if you're looking at, uh, the house from the road, what would be the, the building on the left side, that screened-in porch, the corner of it is like thirty eight and three quarters.
Okay.
From the road, and then, um, there's a deck off of the front of the, the second unit, that's also about thirty-five feet from the road on that one, and then there's one of those two sheds that they have installed, one of those twenty-three. Twenty-three and three quarters, a little more than that from the road, um, but everything we're proposing doing, um, which is basically an add-on, just to connect the two with a deck off the front of it, none of that is actually within forty feet of the road.
Okay. And it does not exceed the coverage of the lot, I saw a second communication about that. For lot coverage, is that correct?
That is correct, so a total lot coverage, um, all in all with everything would be about seven point four percent.
Okay, and that includes the sheds, correct?
That is correct.
But you're not connecting the sheds, you're just connecting the.
Your state, yeah, where they're at. If I had to, I would be happy to to rip one of those out if I need to, to be completely honest with you, um, so yeah, no, tho- those are not going to connect to the dwellings whatsoever.
All right. Commissioners, does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
So, so you're surrounded by Kent School on this property?
Yeah, yeah, entire, basically entirely, I had to send a notice out to Kent Land Trust as well, but I couldn't quite figure out where. That, where I was abutting Kent Land Trust, but it does look like, basically, I'm surrounded completely by the Kent School, both to. The left side of the property, right side of the property, and then behind my property line, which goes up towards, uh. I mean, the Appalachian Trail runs up there, not even probably four hundred feet, feet behind from the, that property line.
But that's the only neighbors.
Yeah, that's my, yeah, there's no, yeah, that is correct, yes.
This was, um, Virginia Bush's property house down there? If that rings a bell to anyone, so.
What are, so both houses were built? Nonconforming, what, what was the, how, both houses built?
I don't know when the second one was built, the first one was built in like, it said nineteen oh eight, when I bought the property, um, so I mean, it it's been there for a minute, um, the second one shows its age, so I'm a suit, like, if, I don't know exactly when it was built, to be honest, um. If I, if I were to guess, I would say thirty plus years ago, to be honest, um, just based on. Based on the looks of it type of thing, but again, when, when I bought the property, all I had was the build date of, it was, it said like nineteen oh eight or nineteen twelve, um. Somewhere in that range, like north of a hundred years ago, and I'm assuming that's the unit on the left, just because that's the side that has plumbing.
Gotcha.
Yeah, the side that doesn't have the plumbing was actually built in nineteen ninety-two, and that was built as an accessory building with electricity, but no plumbing, so that was meant to be a studio or a storage unit.
Are, are both of those structures considered houses, or are they?
No, so the. One is an accessory structure, and one was originally a cabin, and then later permission was granted to add on to the back of that cabin, to enlarge it into more of a single-family home.
And that's the, the previous.
When that addition was added on, they accidentally encroached into the side setback, so they had to come back to the ZBA for permission regarding that, because they wanted to put on that front porch that was there as well, so there was a two-part, uh, variance that was requested to the ZBA. They, the ZBA granted, you know, what had already been built accidentally into the side, but they didn't grant that front porch. Um, but however, it's there, so I don't know how it got there, but there's no record in the file of it being, it was. That's interesting. By the ZBA, and I mean, this gentleman, the, the new owners obviously had nothing to do with that, but that's just kind of the history on the house and, and the property.
Is that the screened-in porch on the house that has plumbing in it, okay?
Yes, yeah.
So. All right, and.
Mr. Davidson, when did you buy the house?
June of last year, so June twenty twenty.
And.
The town tax assessor card, for some reason, has the accessory. Building is having forced air duct, gas. Um, heat, is that correct?
No, it's all electric baseboard in there currently, so the, the other side has a boiler with baseboard heating, um, and then both units have, um, wood stoves in them as well, but, uh, that, that one side of the house, the only utility on that side is electricity.
And they have it listed as a half bath in there, that's not correct either.
No, so there's one and a half baths in the house currently, but they're both on the, they're both in the side with plumbing, so you have, uh, you have a full ba- bathroom ups, what would be the upstairs of that unit, um, and then a half bath with laundry at the bottom, uh, bottom of the stairs.
And the.
So, so currently, there are four nonconforming structures on that property, or is that how we view that?
I think it's, it's three. I think the one, the one built, the, the second shed or garage that's behind appears to be conforming.
So if we, if we actually were to, to grant this variance, we'd only have two then.
I like the way you're thinking.
That is true. All right.
Is this in the, the flood zone as well, I don't know if that's part of our.
Yep, so I, I, after, after, so it's already been approved by the Wetlands Commission, it still needs approval through the, um. The Houston Tonic, um, District Commission and the Zoning Commission for a floodplain. So they still have a, a road to go down with this. Um, the Health Department has approved as well.
They've approved it, I see on the site plan that there's. Um. Engineering to do a new well in a septic, is that being mandated by Torrent Air Health?
Not mandated, they just, they, when we were doing it, they required us to show locations where, in the future, if we had to, there would be possible locations, so that won't be happening, because we're not adding any bathrooms or bedrooms.
Okay.
And the square footage of the connecting addition is about six fifty, is that correct?
That's like with the deck, yes, so, yeah, that's correct, so the actual under roofs only about four hundred twenty when you really look at it, yep.
So I think the, the proposed addition itself is, is pretty straightforward, um. I guess my question, Ty, is, what if we do about the, uh, building without any record, any permits?
The, you mean the, the front porch that has no records or permit?
Was it just the front porch?
It's just the front porch, which actually brought them into the front setback on that side.
Yeah.
Um, so I mean, I would imagine, as a whole, you'd be approving this new structure. Um, as, you know, the, it, the closest point to the front would be thirty-five feet, which is actually the other building where the deck is.
Right.
And you would be approving the entire structure within the thirty-five foot.
Okay, right.
But it was pre-existing with this owner purchased the property. So.
But it was never, never approved it as a, as a variant?
Right, but the, but the side was, I mean, no matter what, even if that wasn't there, he'd still be in a setback, because the side was an issue as well.
Right. Okay, is there any additional information that we need from the applicant at this time? Or? Can, do we feel comfortable that we can close the hearing?
Um, do we need to require, this, this site plan is based on a survey?
Yes.
Okay.
It was done by Robert Hawk.
Okay. So we, we can feel comfortable about the. The setbacks, the dimensions, got it.
The documents. Any other questions? Okay, can I hear a motion to close the public hearing and recess the meeting?
Make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries, so we will re-close the public hearing, and, um. We have a brief recess, which don't need to take a recess, so, um, we will now reconvene the meeting and, um, possibly take action, so you're welcome to, uh, stay if you'd like. However, uh, you wouldn't be able to provide additional information at this time.
Okay, if you don't mind, if I stay, I would love to, um, and I'll just put myself on you.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so reconvene the meeting and, uh, take action on the appeal that we've heard, um. So. Do we have a motion so we can have discussion?
I would love to, but I'm still not familiar with all of the language we need to include.
Sure.
Nick, would you like to take a stab at it?
Yeah, I mean, if I were to stab at it right now, I mean. I, I would move that we, uh. I hadn't thought of a motion, but, um, I, I would move that we accept, uh, application zero three dash twenty-three as applied, uh. Again, this, you know, we're, we're faced, you know, with these historic structures that, you know, present all kinds of problems, and the, uh, you know, in keeping with the plan of, of conservation and development, the. Concept of the community of Kent, uh, th- this is certainly in keeping with the, uh, the area in which the, the premises is located, and it certainly in keeping, and, and certainly does not adversely affect. The plan of zoning and development, the community, and, um, on, on the basis of that, uh, you know, hardship of, of handling historic properties, that I would move to accept the application as submitted.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Joan, and now we can discuss. So.
Um, I just had a question regarding the shed.
Yeah.
They were permitted at some point or not, if any?
So, so the record seems to, um, show that the, the shed that was in the front, in the setback, seems to be pre-existing. Um, the one behind it, that it came in as kind of a little garage, I think it was a pre-built building, it's, it's noted as a shed on Gary's survey, but. The file calls it a garage, it must be a tiny garage, so that did have a permit.
Okay. Um.
So there, there is something in the file allowing for both of those to exist, basically?
The one in the back, there. There's a permit for the one in the front, there's nothing in the file, I'm, I'm assuming that one had always been there, but that's, I can only assume. Uh, had been there, like maybe when the cabin was there, that's, I.
Excuse me, Ty, and, and, uh, I mean, no, I'm doing this a little after the fact, but what is the position of the, uh, you know, the zoning regulations in terms of, of, uh, you know. Dealing with additions that have not been, uh, permitted, so that porch is not permitted, and that shed is not permitted. We, we are allowed to make a, an approval, uh, based on any kind of condition of removal or, or, uh. You know, any kind of compliance of those.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, any, any, so there's a, a zoning concept that if a structure continues to exist for like three years on a property without any notice of violation or any action taken by the town. And, you know, it's allowed to continue to exist. That said, I mean, when you're asking for a variance, I mean, you could ask them to remove it, to try to come into, well, you, you know, they could offer to do that if they wanted. If you weren't happy with the way the plan was presented, one way to remedy that would be to remove that portion that was never approved and is in the setback, and come forward with a more conforming structure. Um, I don't know if you wanna go to that extreme with this, I mean, it's.
So the shed would not fall within that, because the shed is on the. The last, the first documented site plans.
Right, so I mean, that, that seems, it appears as if it's been there quite some time, and it's been allowed to exist, so no action was taken to have it removed, no notice of violation was on the file or anything like that, so, um, you know.
Porch is more interesting, because that, there was.
Saying that to remove the shed would not really be a shed.
Well, the existing site plan's only from April two thousand twenty-three.
Well, no, there was an appeal previously before that.
Okay.
Where? Um, it was. Forget, what was the year that you said, Ty?
Nineteen ninety-seven. So nineteen, in nineteen ninety-seven, a two-part variance was applied for, one was about that addition, so the addition was approved without any ZBA approvals, approved by the zoning office. Um, but when they actually built it, it met everything, when they built it, they found that it had actually went over the side setback, but I think when, I think when that was discovered in ninety-seven, they were actually asking to put that front porch on, so they came in and they, they must have done a survey and said, oh, no, we messed up on the, the rear of the house. So now we have to add that to our request to make that right, and then on the front of the house, they wanted permission for that porch. So the record shows that they approved the side of the house, but the second part of the variance that was being requested, the ZBA did not approve in ninety-seven. However, it's there, it was picked up by half survey, so somebody just went ahead and built it anyways. Um, so it's almost similar to what's happening now, is the fact that they're asking for an addition, and at the same time, if you approve this addition, by means of doing that, you're basically approving. What exists on there that exists, you know, the, also the, um, yeah, what exists there, but that's not the closest part to the road, that porch, it's the deck on the other, other side on that accessory building, that's actually the closest part to the road. So if you were to, you know, want that porch removed, you still wouldn't remedy the issue, you know, it wouldn't help, it wouldn't bring you any closer to conformity.
I, I would argue the front shed is closer to the road.
But that's not, but that's not a part of what he's asking to enlarge, so he's, he's enlarging a nonconforming structure, the shed isn't part of what's being enlarged.
I get it.
Yeah.
I, I drove by yesterday, um, and so as discussed, the, you know, there aren't really any neighbors right there, um, it's sort of up against the hillside and everything, and sort of what's proposed, it's, it's similar to what we've dealt with in the recent past, where it is, you know, just, um. You're doing work to a, a structure with a, with a non, nonconformity, um, and sort of, sort of to my eyes, you know, these, these two structures, and you have the sheds, and, and what's proposed is to bring these two structures together into, you know, one coherent structure, um, so it seems to me it's. Making the, making the lot in the, in the property, um, more coherent.
And it's not enlarging that encroachment that already. Right.
I agree, I think it's a total, a totally reasonable kind of approach to a very tricky lot and a very funky, uh.
Building.
So I've been through these buildings, I know them pretty well, um, so it's, um. I, um, I think it's, it's very reasonable, I just, the shed kind of.
Right.
Always been something I've never been terribly fond of, just, uh, as a static, by and seeing that plunked in the front yard, but it's been there for a long time, I know.
Right. So, um, anyone else have any thoughts? Questions?
I agree with the, the general sentiment, that, um, I think it's a very reasonable proposal, um, I actually. Don't remember even noticing the two sheds.
Hmm.
But then I don't, there are a lot of things I don't notice, but, uh, um, no, and, and the, the encroachment on the existing porch is so minor that. I don't have any problem with it.
Yeah, the houses are actually pretty close to meeting setbacks, uh, for, uh.
Right.
Nonconformity, it's, um. It's, uh, pretty, pretty close, so.
And I think it's gonna, uh, the result will be, uh, uh, one home, you know, with, uh, an accessory building, which seems more sort of in keeping with. The surrounding property, if you will, there's not a lot of houses in that area, but when you get to houses again, so. No, rather than several small buildings on a lot. All right, any other questions, or can we call? Call the question. All the question, all those in favor of, uh, Nick's motion to approve application oh three dash two-three, um, two fifty Scatacoke Road, map five, block three, lot two. For the connecting addition that increases, or, um, yeah, increases the nonconformity, but does not further increase the encroachment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, well, congratulations.
Onto the next hurdle.
Yeah, onto the next hurdle, and you know there is, uh, time delay for this while it gets posted in the paper, and. People get a second chance to, to speak up, yeah, but, um, once that happens, then you can come by and get your. Appeal.
Okay, excellent, I appreciate it, thank you guys so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda moving on would be communications. The package that is, that, the electronic package that was attached to the agenda includes the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies Quarterly Newsletter for Spring twenty twenty-three. So. Fascinating reading. Could take a look.
I haven't been able to read through, but there's something about short-term rentals, Ty, is, um, just interested in that in general.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Anything going on with that in Kent or the surrounding towns?
Um, no, but I feel like it's, it's come, and we have to address, uh, I think it's, it's important to address, it's becoming more and more of a. Of a little bit of a, an issue and, uh, a conflict with our own regulation, right?
It was a, a topic of conversation today.
It's almost a loophole for. I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, yeah, it was a, a topic of conversation today at the Regional Housing Council meeting, um, apparently Sherman has an ordinance that says that rentals can't be for less than thirty days, um, it's, and apparently that, um. The person from Sherman said it's, it's not contested in court, and it's unclear what, whether that would be held up, but.
I've heard Woodbury has a. I've heard Woodbury has a similar type of thing, banning short-term rentals. Kind of Washington requires that they be registered with the town tax assessor, then levy taxes on the personal property. So it seems like a very piecemeal approach to uh, this issue that's happening with various towns.
Yeah.
At least this, this ruling uh, gives some guidance that action is necessary by uh, by the planning commission.
I, I've put a list together, at least forty in Kent right now. And six hu- six hundred is my estimate for the northwest corner right now.
No, there's.
Definitely has an impact.
There's quite a few and, and it does, I mean, bed and breakfasts are saying, well, we don't have to be owner occupied, we're.
Airbnbs.
Just gonna rent out our rooms and call ourselves Airbnb, um, so that's an issue. The issue also is just the housing in general, there's not a lot of housing, affordable housing in Kenner, you know, and and it's taking. These Airbnb seem to be taking the place of, you know, worker housing and that kind of thing, so. I mean, I think everybody just has to get together and come up with what their thoughts are and come up with a balance. Right.
And that, just sorry for continuing education, because I missed the last meeting, I apologize, it was my son's birthday. Uh, we're required to do how many hours every, how many years?
I'll send that to you, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, I, is it, does anybody remember? Is it four hours every two years or something like that? I can send it out to all you guys. It can be completed, UConn Clear has a lot of online classes, if you go to their website, and then the CAG is offering more and more all the time as well, so it seems like between UConn Clear and the CAG, they're offering things to um, make sure that the zoning board of appeals and the zoning commission get their education, and so there's lots of opportunities.
Okay.
And the clear ones, are those all like uh, webinars? Or any ones that you can sort of do your own self-paced? Yeah, yeah, they're self-paced. I mean, I've done, I think I've done them all, and you can kind of do them, you can, you know, log in and log back out. And in the end, you get a certificate, so it shows that you've put in your time, and you know, I'm keeping track of, you know, who's been at the meetings and, you know, that kind of stuff, so at the end of the year, the um, the selectman just has to sign off and turn that in. Gotcha.
There are no required ones, right? They're just.
Affordable housing, that's, that's the one that's required.
Okay. That's why I brought up the affordable housing thing, Airbnb.
Yeah, I mean, there is one, there is one on um, there is one on UConn Clear about affordable housing, if you want to. Good to know.
Alright.
Alright, that uh, completes our agenda for the evening, so thank you all for your time and service this evening.
And thank you for running a great meeting tonight.
Least favorite thing to do, I love you all, but. Alright.
Have a good night.
Took care.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
You think they told Mr. uh, Davidson about the rattlesnakes over there? I've been wondering that all right, I want to say.
Crazy property.
It is a crazy.
It's like built into the hill and stacked, and then there's all.
Into, into the rattlesnake dens.
I know.
Alright, everybody.
Alright, thank you all.